Okay, they called me into order, stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Entertain a motion to declare open meeting.
Amen.
Second, first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. The Open Meetings Act is posted back there on the door. Roll call.
Here.
Jim.
Go.
Tim.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Myself here, Trent is on his way. Uh, approve the agenda. Do you want to make any changes yet?
I, I don't have anything since this went out, uh, anything new, it changed three times in, in two days. But I, I don't have anything new that we need to consider or, uh, any action items at this point. So, as far as I know, this is, is what we need to discuss.
Talk about coaches.
Um, that you could probably put in, uh, discussion eight. As we're talking about wages, paying wages for, uh, work not performed.
Okay. Anybody else alright, anybody else have anything that they need to add to this agenda? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Addendum to current negotiated contract with PPEA.
So, this was the reason that, the main reason that school boards called special meetings across the state, probably across the country, uh, essentially had to do with if a school were to tell a teacher to stay away, uh, because you may be symptomatic or you did come into contact, if the school was going to tell somebody to stay away, the teacher didn't want to have to use their sick bank. Uh, so, the representative of the teachers' union nationwide pushed out to the states and had they pushed that out to the local reps, uh, to, to try to get an addendum to your existing negotiated agreement to add medical leave, uh, to, to be used outside of sick leave. So, sick balances wouldn't be touched if you were to miss school for, uh, viral-related illness. Uh, because it might not be diagnosed, you have to stay away and miss teaching without a diagnosis. Uh, and so, you know, teachers obviously across the country have sick banks built up, didn't want those used. So, so paid medical leave, uh, and now, so, we, you know, and you can do whatever you want. You can do nothing with it, you can give X amount of days paid medical leave, you can require the use of sick leave if a teacher's going to miss school. So, but to be quite honest, it's unnecessary now. It has become unnecessary. When this got pushed out, uh, schools were in session. Schools aren't in session. Teachers are working from home. So, if a teacher were to be sick, they're already at home. And whatever duties we expect them to provide to continue to re, uh, receive their compensation, uh, it's just not a, to be honest, I, it's probably really not a discussion. If there was any chance that we were going to come back to school on the 31st and we're scheduled to, so that might be a reason to, to, to take, to take it up. If we were to come back on the 31st and, and then between then and the end of the school year, have a teacher that, uh, had an exposure, uh, or was exhibiting some symptoms and, and had to be away from school, should they have to use their sick leave? Or do you want to add paid medical leave as an addendum to the negotiation?
Well, my opinion is, is we've got about two weeks till our next board meeting and they're not going to be back in school before that. So, we can, something changes, we can pick this up again later next week. See, see what changes in the next two weeks. The school's done until then.
Honestly.
Off the record.
Well. School's done.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I do believe, um, the governor, not the governor, the commissioner, who for a couple of weeks has been saying, "Schools start to plan, start to plan." And then about a week ago, the governor said, "We will shut you down by ESU regents." And the governor, uh, told, the commissioner told schools on Monday, "By the end of the week, have a plan to not have students at school." He still hasn't said, "I'm shutting you down." Today, he said, "Get your students out of your buildings." Highlighted in bold red letters in a, in an email to superintendents, "Get your students out." So, so, you know, essentially, we, we, you got shut down today if you weren't already. Now, school districts are now deciding whether they're going to have teachers work from home or whether teachers still have to come in. They're, if they haven't done what our teachers have done the past two and a half, three days, they're doing that now. So, that's then a local decision on what are they going to do and expect from their teachers. However, as, as every day, the word comes out more and more that people are told to work from home if you can, teachers can work from home if there are no students in their buildings. So, I'm not going to tell any of the district what to do, uh, but I think, I think those that, uh, those school districts that have their teachers still coming in, they're going to face some serious pressure to have, uh, those, those teachers, you know, come, come in without students. But that's their, again, that's their business.
As of now, schools just done till the 31st.
Correct. As of now, as of now, we, we return on Tuesday, the 31st. So, there will be, um, yeah, I mean, and, and when, when, when something changes to change that, I mean, just, well, as administrative team in consultation with you, you know, will extend that or will be extended for us, which I would expect that before we have an opportunity to extend it another two weeks, uh, the governor or the commissioner or the president, uh, will shut us down.
Can I ask what the plan is for like graduation and prom?
Okay, we have no plan for that yet. No school does, but, um, I would say as we, uh, we, and we haven't even had a serious conversation about it with Mr. Schmidt, but when, when we do, it'll be about the essentials of all the things that your seniors look forward to for years and years and years and their last year, particularly their last semester. Uh, which ones are essential? Your art shows, your honors nights, your spring concerts, uh, your proms, your graduation, they are not all going to happen. So, the reality is graduation is probably without talking to our seniors and we're going to try to do that in, in those families. Graduation and then prom and practical second, I don't know, but, uh, how, we owe them a graduation. I don't know that we owe them a prom, that would be very disappointing, I understand, I, uh, but, and they won't see what our timing is. We could be pushed up to the start of next school year before whatever the all-clear is going to be. Because you know they're not, they being the CDC, the powers that be, they're not going to get the all-clear on this, none too soon. But, but we, we, so, we just, we, we promised them that doggone, we're going to do something. We might have to call them back from college or wherever they are. But we will do something, no idea what it'll look like or when.
And there's really no use to make plans now because it'll change tomorrow.
Plans have been proven folly every day through the past month. So, on, on this, uh, I would say, uh, one was drafted by the PPEA, uh, actually pushed out to them by, uh, the educationists, the Nebraska Education Association, NSE, Nebraska State Education Association. That's the one that says PPEA on it. The language is the same on both of these with the exception of number two, with the exception of number two. So, to give, you know, uh, full attention, you know, to these efforts, I think, I mean, I just would share with you that a number two for the PPA essentially, uh, employees experiencing symptoms of a virus infection who are otherwise unable to attend to their duties because of viral infection must first use, uh, sick leave provided by the Nat, the negotiated agreement as of 1920. So, essentially nine days. So, it would, across the board, everybody would have nine sick days they'd have to use. Or whatever's in their bank below nine, because we have some first-year teachers and second-year, well, we have several teachers that are under nine. It's not just our teachers that have been here, you know, multi-years that are over nine. And so, once you burn from nine down to zero, uh, then a paid medical leave would kick in. Okay? So, that would be the request to PPA. After visiting with Mr. Sauer a little bit, I drafted kind of what, what, what might be a, a position of the, of board. Says exactly the same until they get to the second line. Employees experiencing symptoms of a virus infection who are unable to attend to their duties on a regularly scheduled school day, let's make sure, I think it's important to make sure, you know, if you were here working in the school building and you can't, I think that's an important distinction. I don't know what it would mean though, or what anybody would come back and say, "Okay, I'm home, I'm working from home and I'm sick." I, I don't know, I don't apply. Must first use sick leave provided by the negotiated agreement intended to be used for illness. If an employee has no accumulated paid sick leave or has insufficient, so essentially, the alternative would be, you just use your sick bank. You've got two days, you've got 42 days. The PPA is requesting nine or fewer. Nine or fewer. Again, you can do nothing. You could go with one of these or something else. I don't believe it's going to matter. Because I don't believe your teachers are going to be working a regular school day the rest of this school year. Unless Mr. Sauer said, "You could take it up on April 13th."
How much will, how much will, how much more will you know by then?
Only as much as you do. Uh, I don't have any insider information. I've just, I've, I've begun to just expect the worst, the unexpected and the worst.
Are you anticipating no school again?
I anticipate no school until August. But.
I kind of see some general consensus, so, I mean, you can listen to the radio, listen to other superintendents. They're not planning on going back.
Kansas, Kansas.
They did, Kansas.
They're, they're the first state to just say we're done.
There are several districts in this state that, um, are just indefinite right now that just don't have a return date.
There's no way we're coming back on the 31st. Uh, if, 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 if we get really lucky in the next seven to 10 days and we can come back the last two weeks of May, that would be so spectacular. That would be so spectacular. And so, this could be relevant then. But I, I don't believe between now and April 13th, I, I certainly don't believe between now and your next regular scheduled board meeting, uh, it will apply.
I say we just wait till then.
Another thing is, is they're two weeks behind on pay.
Correct.
Teachers, their paycheck is two weeks behind, so.
Two weeks behind what, I'm sorry?
Today's date, I mean, they're not going to get paid for the day and for two more weeks from now.
They're actually, they're considered being paid for the entire month of March. So, their actual payday is the first of the 31st. Now, classified cuts off on the 12th of the month. But as far as for retirement purposes and for everything I return, I turn into the state, it's for the entire month of March.
So, when we sign checks, our next meeting, it'll be for March, the whole month of March.
The checks you signed for me today were for March.
Today, for the teachers.
And those are teacher, I mean.
Yeah, but when they get paid.
So, I think we can, we can.
It can still be adjusted if we have to go back. Anybody else have, I think they want to do different?
Right, let's leave letting it go, because like you said, things change so fast anymore. It can be completely different in a week. If we've got time to wait a little bit, let's just see how it plays out.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on, number eight. Return to work agreement with classified stamp.
This is the, the, uh, the more difficult discussion, I think, and maybe one of the more important decisions that boards are having to consider, and that's our, our hourly, uh, staff. Your, your teachers are getting paid, uh, and your, your, your salary folks are getting paid unless you wanted to do something different with that, certainly don't recommend it, but, but your hourly folks, when, when kids aren't here, that don't get paid. So, there's a lot of, uh, return to work agreements out there, and the way that works essentially is school districts are determining, are deciding what to pay them. They're paying them something with the agreement that you will come back when we reopen. You can't go out and get a different job and then have us pay you while you're not on the job and then, and then tell us that, you know, you're done, uh, when we're ready to have you back. So, it's a, it, it, it guarantees our staff will be ready to come back, our full staff will be ready to come back. And probably more important is it guarantees their income, uh, so they can pay their bills. This, this would amount, between now and the end of the year, we're about to write out about a hundred thousand dollars, that's a pretty good round figure, about a hundred thousand dollars, about eleven thousand dollars a week. We have 43 full days and four one o'clock dismissals. The money's been budgeted for, to pay them through the year. Our revenue will continue. We had great discussion last month and compensated them, uh, fairly and acknowledged the importance that they are to this district. I mean, I, I would just, I would certainly encourage you to pay them and expect a return to work agreement. We, we, you know, Kelly and I, Kelly primarily can, can figure average hours and so on, but we've got a few different groups, as you know. We've got our paras staff, which is essentially all the same, they work essentially all the same hours. Now, their averages would be between one and two, they'd, they'd be in a range, they're not all exactly 7.5 times five or 7.5 a day, so they're 7.25, 7.6, or 7. So, uh, and, you know, you could pick a number right in that range if you want, you can pick any number you want. But we could determine quite easily essentially what is their average, what do they make and what are they therefore budget in their household. You, you have, uh, two of our three secretaries, Kelly's salary, but two of our three secretaries are, are a few more hours than our paras, they're a little closer to right at 40. Our paras are closer to 35, our custodial, uh, and four custodians, one, uh, you know, Gail is guaranteed 50 a week, 40 plus 10 OT, uh, Bill's at about 40, uh, Jolene is, Jolene's about 35 and then Derek is about 18. And then your kitchen staff, Linda's at 40 and Rebecca and Teresa are right about the same as paras and then Karen is, is right about 30. So, if one size doesn't fit all, and then you have your bus drivers. So, one size doesn't fit all, so we'd love to discover again, I guess, primarily with paras, I guess, what, what you were interested in.
So, we, sorry to interrupt there, we still do lunches.
Uh, we are, and we can talk about that, yeah, yeah. So, there are some, there are some hours that our kitchen staff will be working per day. I'm thinking about two, unless they're going to be part of the delivery as well and then some of them might be upwards of four. So, there will be some, got a little bit of repurposing of their duties. We don't have any repurposing of duties for paras, we're not going to have them come in and start to do something. Because quite honestly, I mean, we're being told people need to stay at home. Now, our kitchen people are vital to feeding our children and so we, you know, as, until we're told they can't come in, we're going to have them come in early in the morning, bag breakfast and lunches. Uh, and we're going to get those delivered, but we're not going to have our paras come in while our teachers are gone and, and say we need to, see if we can get some kind of work, some kind of time. Because we, we just don't, we just don't have that. Kelly and her business manager cohort of people that chat out there share a lot of information and overwhelming majority of school districts are doing paid leave with return to work agreement.
So, that's a signed agreement that they have to guarantee they'll come back?
Yes, so we would, if you approve it, I would have to get a resolution drawn up by our legal counsel.
So, if they find another job, just because they want to take another job, they have to reimburse the money, huh?
That, that is how I believe that, that would work, is they have to re-return that, which is complicated and awkward, I don't know how that would go, but, uh, but there is some language like that, you have to pay back the district if you violate the agreement. So. That's, that's that. Folks, we can't lose our classified stamp. And if you don't compensate them, uh, I would recommend close to what their routine wage is. I, you know, I don't, I, I just, I would, I would hate to have, they told us last week we were, last month we were so important and now you're trying to save a buck.
Is that what we're trying to decide, what percent of their regular wage we're going to?
Well, that's up to you, what, what do you, first of all, do you think they deserve to have some wage for non, uh, for not working? If so, uh, what should it be? Zero to a hundred?
Is the district going to, I mean, we're going to save some money, aren't we, by not being open?
Well, I told Gail, "Turn those doggone boilers down." Uh, I mean, so we're going to, we're going to save, that'll be, it'll be somewhat nominal. We won't have some, some activity expense, we can talk about, you know, do we pay our spring coaches? Do we pay track and golf coaches? I mean, you can have that conversation. I, I haven't taken a poll of other school, it, it just hasn't been the most important thing that superintendents have been thinking about, so I apologize, I mean, I did push that out to say, "What are you guys doing?" Or, and gals. I mean, it's no fault of their own, they've been being paid for that since September. Been being paid for spring duties, because we put all of that in their 12-month. Again, you can do that and save a few bucks and really, and, and send a difficult message. A message that'll be received.
What do we pay our coaches, we don't pay the coaches?
Well, our coaches are, our head coaches are anywhere from 3,500 to 5,000.
I mean, that's broke up throughout the whole year.
It is.
So, they've already got part of it.
They, they have.
No, that's per, per season, per.
I know, but I mean, they get that, that 5,000 or whatever it's broken up. So, they've already been paid for part of it.
Right now, we have probably close to 20,000 dollars in coaching for spring activities. 20,000 dollars would, has been, has started to be distributed again in September.
They would actually, if they, if they only coached track, they would actually have to pay some money back or be taken out of their next check, yeah.
Between now and their August check, you know.
We touched on it just a little bit today, but I don't know whether any of our staff takes unemployment during the summer normally, no idea. I don't know whether that would be an advantage to them to take unemployment starting now.
I think the unemployment laws would probably have to change, which they could.
They did, they have.
They, they have and will probably continue to, so.
That's the house.
That, that would be something that folks who, you know, would have to consider too. Well, you know, you know, we're going to pay them their wage and return to work and they also go and recoup. I doubt it, because that would probably be part of their application for unemployment.
What I'm saying is they may not want to be paid, so, you know, if unemployment looks better than three months, five months unemployment looks better than three months of, or two months of salary here, maybe they would rather not be paid and take the unemployment.
They might have money ahead.
Yeah, but if we pay them, that'd throw them out of unemployment, so, but we've got to give them that option, I think.
That could be their decision.
Right, right. But if they sign a contract, you know, is that going to throw them out of that contract?
Well, if they sign a contract, they can't draw unemployment till school, till, school would be out and they don't need.
Tell one of time cards to go for the 20th pay period.
You know, so they'd have to let, just forget the whole thing and go on their own.
So, they don't sign them.
So, we do on the 10th for the third, board meeting on the 13th. You, you could, uh, consider something until the next board meeting, uh, because their, their, uh, their time cards are due the 10th day every month to be paid on the 20th. So, they're going to be paid, uh, let's see, when did we start missing? They're going to get their full paycheck on this Friday. Their paycheck on April 20th is already going to be short. How many days did they miss one this week?
Just once.
Some missed one, some missed two days this week already. And they're going to miss now two more. Uh, so they're already being, uh, affected in their April, uh, 20th pay period.
But we can still act on that in the board meeting.
You could act on it on the 13th.
Yeah, can they check what we made out till the 20th?
Yes, their check for, uh, for April 20th, you can make a decision on the 13th. That, because otherwise their check on, on the 20th of April will have two days on it. Most of them will have two days on it.
It would have to have a decision that night, because it's not, it says not typed up to 20th. I mean, it's, it has to go through the system and payroll taxes and everything, so we would have to have something.
We need, we need your, for heads up.
I want to. What, what advantage is it to wait or not wait?
I'm just saying, it, it, you, you could conceivably wait and they could still get their full pay or whatever you choose to give them on the 20th pay period. They're going to get their, they're going to get what they expect on the tw, on Friday, which is the 20th of March. But, but yes, I, I agree.
Well, yeah, the government might come out and say, "Well, we'll pay all salaried people that lose their jobs, we'll make that up somehow," or hourly.
It was on the news to three out of five.
They may pay them and we will have to.
Well, they're going to send everybody a thousand dollar check, it looks like, that's not going to be doing.
Everybody's going to need that.
Yeah, uh, unless you're a wealthy landlord or a caliphateer.
Markets.
I challenge him to find one.
I know it's ridiculous, it's just absolutely so. So.
So, really, the only thing we can act on, the money's still, will be going out with these coaches.
You're going to have.
By the next paycheck.
Yeah, because they've been.
Yeah, if we wanted to.
Has ever, all our spring, all, all our spring coaches been paid since September, including junior high assistant?
Not him.
Not him, his comes in. Because all of our coaches in the spring, with the exception of Mr. Muller, who also junior high track and Mr. Knack, who's our golf coach, they are all certified employees, so that's just part of their teaching wage lumped in, paid September 20th to August 20th. But Mr. Knack is paid monthly.
Yes, yes, yes.
But Mr. Muller gets his junior high assistant track all checked and paid.
I guess if you look at it as a business, the, the money's there, but I, I mean, it's not coming, it's not like my business or your business, you know, things drop and you're out. I mean, it's, it's already there, I, I guess, I don't know.
Uh, I, I think I know what you're saying here.
You know, I mean.
This is completely out of their hands.
Yeah.
I mean, this is not a situation that's, I mean, common.
Right.
It's a black swan event, is what you call it.
Well, I, I mean, like I said, also, the money is there, yeah. I, I think so too, the money's there, it's not like.
I think you pay them in full.
Yeah, it's not like.
No, big motion.
It's not like my business.
There might be, there might be some details there that, you know, I'm not sure, like, for example, a bus driver, anyway, he gets paid by the route, you know? I'm not sure if, if an estimation of how many routes he would have left for the rest of the year, you'll pay them in full for that or not, I don't know.
Yeah, you don't even know who drives what route when, how.
Exactly, maybe McCabe would have to, and Darren would have to talk about that, figure that out. If you don't pay them in full, you're going to lose staff. I mean, you can, you can go and say, "Well, you know, maybe 8% is enough," or not, I don't think so. I think you've got to, I think you've got to pay them in full.
Everybody's kind of budgeting that for the year.
I mean, it's what I'm playing on.
If we've got the resources to.
All right, but I have a bus driver, basically, average.
No, are your bus drivers, I mean, some are employed outside of driving that group.
Right.
So, that, that's a little bit different for everybody else, I mean, this is their, their job. As far as I know, their own job, but it's their primary job.
But some of them come and go, I mean, you're going to figure out, okay, they've been gone and they're planning on coming back later.
Bus drivers.
Yeah, you know, well, what, what is it going to have to change from one person to the next? What date are you going to use to pay one versus the other?
Right. There were some of the drivers, you know, they count on that though, too, I mean.
No, but, but I'm saying, some of them aren't here for the whole season.
Exactly.
And then they come back, so what, what's the date you quit paying one and start paying the other, you know?
Yeah, I think Bob can enlighten us, anybody with that information.
Kelly, Kelly would know as well, like, you know, all of our drivers, how many routes they have driven. I mean, we do primarily have four full-time drivers, uh, including a, a sped van driver. But, but yes, we've got a driver that goes, you know, south for a month or whatever, that comes back and is steady, you know?
So, what do you do if we have three snow days, no buses?
Well, we had that last spring.
So there's no pay then?
Well, we reroute to Foster, route to Brunswick, hard surfaces only.
Right, I remember that.
So we went from four routes to three hard surfaces only, S and A, Foster and Brunswick. And Bob McCabe just managed it. We paid those as regular routes.
Well, you're just saying, like, if tomorrow was a snow day and we didn't have school, would they get paid?
No.
Nothing.
They get two paid.
They get two paid snow days.
And they've already had their two paid.
And we had.
They get two paid snow days a year.
So now you gotta decide if tomorrow's a snow day or not, if we're gonna subtract that.
Here's, here's my point is, we can't give bus drivers.
No, I know.
If we lose the ones we got, unless somebody has room to start driving school bus next year.
You could apply that to kitchen, you could apply it to dairy, you could apply it to snow.
And they're no different than the other ones.
And you can apply it to coaches.
Yeah.
The, the money's in the budget, folks.
Agreed. Agreed.
Yeah, I, I agree that they need to get paid. I just think that we need to reevaluate at our next meeting and see what comes out with the government and stuff like that. There may be some changes. I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna cut them back from what they're getting, but it might come in a different form. You know, possible.
I think we could pass it to, to where they have one for next payroll and reevaluate it.
Yeah, I think you would give them certainly some peace of mind if they knew that their April twentieth paycheck will be pretty close to what they expected, what they budgeted every month.
I'm not for cutting their pay whatsoever, but I just don't know what's gonna come out of that.
Right, the government, right.
Right.
It might be better off if they have it.
Yeah.
Well, that sounds like your motion.
My only other question is, is the cooks that are actually gonna come in, does that?
Yeah.
Do you just pay after the hours they don't get?
Yeah, because, because, I mean, that's a legitimate question that I hope is a difference maker, really, because we just need folks to do what needs to be done. So I, I hope I wouldn't have a cook that says, hey, I've gotta come in and work three hours and I get my regular pay. Parents don't come in and work at all, and they get their regular pay. I would hope people wouldn't do that.
No.
That, that wouldn't exist.
Yeah, exactly.
But.
And also the people that are delivering the meals.
Yeah.
Need to coach them with them that are already getting paid, not an extra cost.
Certainly. Working with Bob on that, that could be cooks, it could be Bob. It will be Bob. He'll be helping with that. He's determining how many routes, how many delivery routes we'll need, two or three. Now, we are gonna have to open this up. Right now, we're just getting started with, and I can, I can go with that now. Well, I'll wait till ten, sorry.
Here can bus drivers run, deliver food?
I'll wait till ten.
Well, even parents, I mean, if you have parents, we're willing to do it.
Yes, they've, they've offered, certainly. They've offered, so that, that is an option. I don't know if it would be necessary, but that is an option.
We have enough people that are good-hearted people that are, it's gonna stuff up. I don't, I don't concern about that at all.
They got some time to think of a motion before we get to twelve.
Yeah. Any other conversation on that? Ten coronavirus employees.
Uh, number nine, sorry. This, I, I don't know that it's necessary, folks, but in the event, in the event that we are, that we can't gather as a board, but we still have to pay bills. So legal councils are encouraging school boards to pass a resolution so that superintendent can pay nondiscretionary claims. These are gonna be our things that we just have every month. And that's to keep the economy going, so that folks, so that businesses, companies, corporations can still receive their income, so they can pay their employees. So this would, this would just be to pay nondiscretionary claims in the event that the board, for whatever reason, can't, can't gather to approve it. And they would approve in, in the rears.
I would think that, yeah, I mean, I would think that at some point, if it got to that, you could do town conference or whatever.
If there was something extraordinary. Now, your claims are gonna go down quite a bit, because we don't have people here using resources.
Or should it be anything unusual, you know, that gets purchased earlier?
Yes, yeah, this wouldn't be.
No stickers or anything like that.
If you approved that last month, you didn't even know what. Of course, there'd be your utilities and fuel's gonna go way down. Just, you know, those things that, that are in your claims every month. So.
And you should still be able, I mean, as far as signing checks, we want to, it should still be able, even if it's just come in and they're on Kelly's desk, and we pick them up and sign them and leave and don't even see anybody.
Unless you and I test positive.
Unless you have that.
You should write it wrong.
I think you should weigh text.
I'll bring them to you and.
They'll bring them out to you and you'll pick up and sign them.
But it's just to try to keep one, a segment of the economy, you know, functional.
Agreed.
So, that's, should be a simple thing, but.
Yep.
Okay, coronavirus point.
So if you do have children, then you're, you're a little more up to speed on what, what we've been doing. I'll let Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. Thompson speak briefly, just bring you up to speed on, you know, on, on what's been going on. Obviously, you know, this just started to happen so fast, and if you follow, and of course, I, I follow all kinds of other school districts and the things that they're doing. Everybody's doing the same thing right now. The same, it looks a little different. Of course, we're all doing the same thing before this. But they're depending upon, you know, their demographics, the size of their community and all that business. I, I don't know of any that are just saying, we're done, we can't, we're not providing this here. So they're getting creative, and our teachers have been so amazing to, to watch and listen. I mean, because they, they now, I don't like the cliche, think outside the box, but they've been, you know, they, 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 just out of necessity, in a time of crisis, amazing things happen. Society does amazing things. They problem solve and they find new ways to do things that they're like, we should've been doing it this way all along. So our, our teachers have been spectacular in what they're doing to prepare for something still for kids. I'll let Mr. Schmidt, Mrs. Thompson share with you a little bit.
You wanna start there? All right. Seven, twelve level. Juniors and seniors came in today, so they got all their resources out of their lockers. They've been one-to-one already, so they kinda have a head start on, on a few of the things that we're doing. Freshmen and sophomore are gonna come in tomorrow to get all their stuff. And Tom has devices checked out to each student, so that way, when they come in, they'll get a computer, they'll get a charger, and then they can pick up all their books and everything while they're here to take home with them. And Friday, we have it set up for seventh and eighth grade to do the same thing. We have pickups set up in the morning, so that way, if students don't come in, we can start contacting them in the afternoon, figuring out how to get them their stuff. So if they can't come in and get it, I can take it out to them, whatever it might be, but finding ways to get them that before next week. And the plan is to start next week with our teachers starting communicating and working with kids through our online Google Classroom. And some have already started. I know Claire and Kiana have already turned stuff into Mrs. Whacker, our projects online. And there's people talking to Mrs. Mozel, getting journals and stuff ready. I had the teachers add me to all their classes, so we have about thirty-eight classes set up, just so I can help monitor what students are getting on there. And the ones that aren't, I can help contact them and try and help urge them to get involved with it. And the teachers have been giving feedback to those that have turned stuff in. And as they turn it in, they will be giving feedback of what they're doing well, things they could do better. Or even if they have problems doing it, they can set up Zoom meetings, and they can do that with a, a group of them, instead of just contacting one student at a time, so they can help them that way. Boyer's been recording himself teaching all day, the last two days, has been pushing out videos. There's just a lot of things that our teachers have been working together. I know Mrs. Hits and Mr. Reed dissected a rat today, and they pushed that out, so there's a.
Found that in the boiler room.
I have it there, huh?
Yeah.
You're kidding, right? No.
Tastes like chicken. Tastes like fat.
Sorry.
We're dissection rats they already had.
Our building will be all digital, and I've been working or talking with Nikon and stuff, so families that don't have internet, Grant's been really good to work with, and we're gonna get families set up, whether we do regional hotspots in town or, or we actually push it out to those individual houses, so that way we can get that set up. Still working with the country. There's a, a couple of families that live outside of city limits, and how we're gonna get them set up, but we're gonna find ways to, to get them so they can access the resources that we're gonna provide them.
So I didn't see where they were gonna up everybody's.
Well, that breaks work.
Yeah, so they're gonna up everybody's power, so that, so all customers that even have it now will get.
Yep.
So thank you to.
Mr. Schmidt, would, would this have been possible without that purchase of Chromebooks by the board?
No, we'd have been short devices. So, yeah, that's a big one, the juniors. And Tom's been running around crazy, so I know it wouldn't have got done this week without being already one-to-one juniors and seniors. So it, it's gonna be pushing it to get it out by Friday, but I know.
He's been rocking it.
He's got tomorrow ready. He's been killing it. And, and tomorrow will be a huge day for him, getting all those pushed out and getting Fridays ready too. And I know it's, it takes a toll on parents, 'cause they might have to come in twice, instead of just all in one pickup, I get that. But in, in this building, there, there is a lot of preparation on his end that's really gone into this in documenting and keeping track of devices and everything that's going out. So really appreciate the work and effort he's put into it.
But from what he tells me, it'll still be controlled at home, as far as what they can get on and can't get on. It won't just be open.
No, no, he still has access to see, you know, the web browsing and the history and all that stuff, so we can still lock them out, if you will.
So it's all filtered in?
Yeah, and do that, so.
So is there a need to send something home, just take care of the computers to the parents? You know, I don't want it in a handbook, but just to remind her.
I thought about pushing out Friday a YouTube video and pushing that out through our social media, just kinda some digital citizenship stuff, and kinda inviting the kids to be creative and what they wanna create and how they respond back to things. But that was gonna be a big piece of it, the importance of taking care of their devices. But we can also push out a letter, if you wanted to, explaining kinda some guidelines, 'cause we're gonna get them back.
Yeah.
And understanding that we want them back in the same shape that what we send them out as.
And what are we gonna hold them to? You know, the handbook says, you're responsible if something's damaged, you gotta pay for it. Are we gonna hold them to that? I mean, little different circumstances than what we designed the handbook for.
Yeah, a little like a textbook that goes out new and comes back, you know. Sometimes it's, it's a little bit of a subjective, like, you're gonna pay twenty dollars for that binder broken or something. You know, so yes, this is, we'll, we'll figure it out, and we'll, you know, there's no way to know for sure, but.
Yeah, I don't think you can send anything out that says, you know, this, this, and this, but just, just an update, you know, take care of them, be responsible.
Okay, so.
Are these, are you, what are you guys doing for grading wise? Like, are these assignments graded or are they just? I heard some rumors, I guess.
So.
If it is or if it isn't?
I mean, I want to do this on live TV if you're listening.
I am, I am expecting my teachers, quote unquote, I guess, grading the stuff. Are we going to put it into the gradebook and it's going to count towards their GPA? No. But I want them to grade material. I want them to provide feedback, treat it as if it is a normal classroom setting. That way, a kid understands if they're doing it well. That puts a little bit of pressure on the students to do the work on their own. A little bit higher accountability level, which is what we wanna create. But I've also told the teachers, there will be students that do absolutely nothing. But you have to focus on the ones that are participating and doing things and helping them keep going. And that's why I wanted to be added to classes, so I can help contact the ones that aren't in there and help try and get them involved and get them participating, so they don't fall behind.
Now, over in the elementary building, it's a little bit different. It's a lot different, actually. I brought two packets, so if you wanted to share that one, then you wanted to share that. That's an example of, from third grade, and that's an example from first grade. The learning that's happening in the junior high and high school is new learning that's happening. In the elementary, we are only doing enrichment and review. We can't send home packets expecting parents to teach new concepts to students. And so we are doing review and enrichment. We have on the front of all of the packets a suggested schedule for parents, if they want to go by that. I know I took mine home tonight and Jackson looked at me and said, do I have to go by this? I said, yep, 'cause on the front it says, you know, bedtime eight o'clock unless you follow the schedule, and then you can stay up till eight thirty. And he was like, oh, mom! But there are a lot of fun activities throughout the packet. There's a lot of, um, just drill and practice activities through the packet as well. We wrestled with the idea of, do we want these packets back? Because then we're exposing our teachers to germs from every single house that they went home to. And so we looked around online, how long do germs last on paper? How, 'cause, you know, you hear they last different on different surfaces. So we finally went with, okay, we're gonna collect them all back and we're gonna be able to give these students feedback as well. So they'll set in a tub over the weekend, and then teachers will look at them the following week and they'll be able to give students feedback. Because some of the stuff that they're sending home in these packets are really cool, and I want them to be able to look at the drawings that their students are doing and, and give them feedback. And one of the expectations that elementary teachers have is just making, reaching out and making phone calls to each student in their class every week, and just finding out how's it going. And so they're all excited about that. We also have teachers that are just being very creative and doing outside-of-the-box things. So Mrs. White and Ms. Wabs do summer school, or summer reading usually. And so they're gonna do Wednesdays with Wabs and White. And they're gonna do drawing activities online. And Mrs. Moret is doing her workouts on Fridays during the morning activity time on Facebook Live, so kids can get on and workout with her. So they are stretching and going outside of the box. And, you know, one of the things that Mrs. Moret said to me today was, gosh, I just keep thinking my week one packet sucks. I can't wait to send home my week two packet. So they're already thinking, how can I make it better? And they're ready for that. So each Thursday, parents will come in and they can return the packet that their students worked on the previous week and pick up the packet for the new week. I did tell all of the teachers that they can continue checking out library books for their students, and they can just put them in their packets. So a lot of teachers are sending that message home in packets or through email to students, and just saying, if there's a certain request that you want, just let me know and I'll get it in your packet for you. Or if there's an interest that you want, something you wanna read about, let me know and I'll get you a library book. So we're gonna try to continue on as normal as we possibly can. Teachers packed up, students supplies, crayons, scissors, glue, all of that stuff today. So students will have everything that they need in order to complete their packets and do their learnings at home.
It'd be nice if we had an online list of all the books in the library.
I know. We, we did find, so Mrs. Yilk got on and found some really cool library sources that parents could go on. So on the front of one of those, on the very bottom, that open library one, parents can go on and make a free account and they, kids can check out any book they want online on that one. And a lot of teachers also are already on Epic, and so they can do online books from there as well, and they'll read them to them from there. But it would be nice if they could get to our library and find out what's in and what's not, but.
I forgot to add too, with the grading thing, 'cause college credit classes are different. College credit classes aren't gonna be graded. Those will go in the gradebook. We are still working with colleges on how that's gonna look with that, and that's a whole nother beast.
Yeah.
But, so our college kids know that if they're taking a college credit or a college-level class, and I know Dean's been reaching out to a lot of them and informing of them about the rigor and the pace that they have to keep up with, so they're aware of that and understand that so far.
All of our teachers have created a Google Sheet to document all of their, when they're working from home, they're documenting it. If they make a phone call, they're documenting it. If they give a kid feedback, they're documenting it. If they do some research for the next week, so they're documenting it. So we will have, at the end of the year, for, you know, for our records, which, you know, whether we're gonna collect them or share them, but every teacher is documenting the amount of their work from home. So we just thought that was important, not to check up on them by any means, but almost just for their own, you know. But almost just for their own, you know, I mean, just to, to, you know, feel good about, you know, everything that it, that it is that they're, that they're doing. So, so that is happening as well.
We know, we gotta be ready for the possibility of this going into next year.
Well, we should be surprised. But why would you say something?
Well, you never know. You never know. You're, you're learning a lot and you could use it if that happens.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, then I'm gonna need you guys to go ahead and purchase some more laptops so we could do some e-learning across the, across the street as well.
Can't have football season virtually.
Well, that's true.
If we're not gonna have football, why do we need school?
So, and then with regard to, to, uh, feeding, uh, our, our families. I mean, Linda can still order and get her stuff. So, so those, those resources are still coming in. Linda's been spectacular. So, the plan is we, we notified, uh, uh, we, we will start with our, our free families. Our families that get free meals, that we get full reimbursement for. So we just notified that. We're gonna start bringing these to you on Monday. Let's tell us different. We're bringing them to you. We had a couple of, you know, opt down and we might have a couple of them show up if they're, you know. But we're bringing a fully reimbursable breakfast and a lunch, cold, both cold in a bag. And we, the plan is to start that delivery at eight thirty in the morning. And again, Bob's working on the routes for where we need to go, so he has a list. Ms. Patsy maintains all of that data. And so she ran some data for us today, uh, who these people are, where they live, the, the numbers and, and all that. So, Bob's working on those routes. Uh, he and I are meeting with, with Linda tomorrow to kinda finalize that and her staff. She's had her staff come in, uh, because they'll need to bag all this up in the mornings. Be anywhere from, uh, a hundred to a hundred and fifty potentially, uh, breakfasts and lunches, uh, delivered every day. Now, we can't by law restrict this to all families. We do have to provide this to all families. We've just kinda rolled and we're just kinda phasing it in. So at some point next week, we'll be, uh, we'll be putting out a survey to finding out from all families, who wants this? And now we got a whole different animal. I don't expect that we'll have a whole lot of full pay, folks that are gonna want to round bag.
Of course, I still have to pay there, right?
Yes, yes. Uh, so I don't expect we'll have a whole lot, but we have to offer it. You see what some other school districts are doing? They have a grab and goes, they have drive-throughs and all that, but just cause logistics and so on. But zero to twenty-one is who we're required to educate in the public school system. And so, uh, in school districts, communities are providing meals to every child, zero to twenty-one. I mean, just, you can just imagine the, the monstrosity of that. Omaha Westside handed out twenty-one thousand meals yesterday. So, I mean, imagine that, that the people that put that together. Now that's maybe how they're using some of their classified staff, our, our kitchen staff. Pretty certain they have to manage that work in the morning, whether they're six thirty to eight thirty, they're ready. Back in the suburban, red van, the white van, and out they go. So, uh, and then we'll manage that. Patsy will still have to, you know, on a weekly basis or whenever, she has to do the work. She has to submit the claims, she's gonna keep that data.
I did give Patsy a spreadsheet as well, so she could keep track of her time.
So, uh, so yes, she'll have some hours. I don't know, you know, Kelly will have some hours cause the school, she, I mean, the school can operate without every, without any of us except Kelly. I mean, she, if we have one person.
And then nobody gets paid and then everybody stops.
So she'll, Kelly will have some, and she knows when she will have to come in and work and when she, what she can maybe do from home. But most of it, you know, we're counting software this year and not at home. So, we're, we're still, we're still, as they say, building this airplane while we're flying and, uh, as every school district.
So how much exposure are you gonna have to teachers that are coming in on a daily basis and using the copier and stuff? I mean, do we need to protect you a little bit more than what's going on right now?
Um, I don't really, really feel that as much. They killed my machine today.
The machines were screaming.
AKA Mrs. Thompson. It said, "Call repair man" and just quit.
There'll be a lot more activity in the elementary. The elementary school will have, on Thursdays, it'll be a little bit busier of a building. Not a lot of activity in this building.
Well, and I plan on being the only one there on most Thursdays.
Yes, but people will be coming.
Yes.
We're not requiring our teachers to come in on the packet drop off pickup, just Mrs. Thompson. We're restricting access to the building to school employees only because people will, you know, you know, over Christmas, breaking what happens, why everybody wants to come to the gym. All our alumni do and they bring their friends and they go, and that's great, we like that. But, uh, we're, we're just saying if you're, if employees can still have access, they can still walk the halls, they can use the gym, they can use the weight room. But nobody else. Now, I don't know if that's right. I don't know that I wanted to say, "If you don't have school, teacher business, we don't want you here." We, 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 we might come to that because that might get dictated to us by, by you or by, you know, somebody else that says that they need to, with their quarantine. I mean, that could happen. But if somebody came up here to work, can they walk the hall for ten minutes? Are we gonna say we can't do that?
Weight room kinda concerns me a little bit though, if it isn't being disinfected.
Well, they're supposed to do it themselves. We did purchase sanitizer, sanitizer wipes at the start of the school year, uh, in last fall. So I mean, we're in better practice of wiping down our machines ourselves than we had been before. But, um, so I, I, I don't expect that, but that could be a problem. But people are gonna get stir crazy after a week or two and, and, uh, but our employees, we can tell them, you're still working. And we're not, but we're not gonna say you need to work, but you can't access the resources of school.
Okay, move on to action items. eleven, discuss and take possible action on making negotiated contract with PPA. Think we're gonna make, anybody wanna make a motion on that or is?
Do you, you're, you're gonna motion a table?
No, if nobody makes a motion, we just go, we just.
If it dies, your lack of motion can be added, table, essentially table. Till next month.
Okay, number twelve, discuss and take possible action on compensation agreement with return to work resolution for classified employees. Yeah, I think we're all in the same boat on the return to work contracts. I think we want to guarantee they're gonna have a paycheck, basically what they're receiving now. But we want to be able to renegotiate it, or rethink it at our next meeting. I mean, not, not that we're gonna take their paycheck away from them, but just where it comes from.
Better than we can, the government take care of it, right? You know, if our plan made better than we do. Anything is that we're assuring them that they're gonna be taken care of.
You, you could pass a motion that you intend to, to honor their wage at or near their average monthly wage. Now, the, near gives you the wiggle room to say, "Well, you average thirty-six point five a week, we're gonna pay thirty-five." We're gonna, you know, I mean, we're gonna pay the, I'm, I'm talking, pairs are generally seven to seven point five a week. There are just, there's a few fuzzy ones in there. I said seven to seven point five a day, seven to seven point five hours a day, which is thirty-five to thirty-eight a week. So.
No.
No. I just see no lockers in because we still have to do it if they change.
Well, you can always undo, that board can always undo something that you do. I, I would feel good if they had something a little more definitive than, we're, let's wait and see what Trump's gonna do. They need to know whether they need to look for a job now that there's not any between now and April.
I don't know if we even need to do this return to work contract now. I mean, you can get something figured out in our next meeting.
Sure.
If, you know, if at that time, whatever we decide, we put it, push it out. But I don't know that for the next two weeks, we need to have that signed, but anyway, I guess so.
Basically, we just wanna make a motion to guarantee a paycheck April twentieth. Right? We're gonna rediscover it at the.
Yeah, but we also wanted to know they're gonna still get a check after that. We just don't know where it's gonna come from, you know.
What it's gonna look like.
But, but you, you would expect that you're gonna honor their average weekly hours, close to their average weekly hours? I mean, or unless your conversation is, is starting to think, oh, we're gonna pay a percentage of what they normally get. But do you anticipate that you're gonna pay them the average what they normally would be?
Yeah, I mean, you think it's easier to come up with an average number or just go with the four-week average on each individual person?
We can calculate, we can calculate that.
So if there is a difference, they're getting paid what they're doing, actually doing. Is that a problem to figure that out?
It, it isn't, uh, it isn't. We can do that. I mean, so you can tell us.
What you were saying, if there was a reason to do that versus the other two days, I mean, no complaints, this way you're getting paid what you do.
I mean, look, just looking at the calendar head, what I would normally do is, is take an average of what, cause I know what they, everybody basically works the same. But you have to take, it might get two days off for Easter before this thing's paid.
Sure.
So, do I not pay that? I'm assuming I would not pay for that Friday, Monday, because I mean, we wouldn't have paid them to begin with. I mean, those are the kind of things you kinda have to take into consideration.
Right.
So how do you make the motion?
So I say, how do you wanna order that?
You, so on the back, I have some suggested language. I'll make a motion that, to make a motion to compensate our hourly classified staff at a rate, uh, at or near, uh, their weekly average. And then you could continue with in return for a resolution, at or near their weekly average. Gives you a little wiggle room to say, "Okay, you average thirty-six point five, but we're gonna pay all our pairs thirty-five a week, thirty-five hours a week." That would be. Except for one pair who's part-time.
Yeah.
So you, you would have to pull, but, but eleven of your twelve pairs, ten of your eleven pairs are all within, are all between thirty-four and thirty-eight on average per week.
Okay, so how's it gonna look if the Senate gives them offers to pay and vered in?
Well, there are two weeks we could check.
Well, can you put a stipulation in there that says we find a pay unless the Senate gives them?
And then you can say to be reconsidered at the April thirteenth, fourteenth.
That's for unemployment though. They're gonna be employed. You don't know what they're gonna do.
Well, for the summer, they will be.
I say, I suppose. But they gotta work over the summer. This, this won't, this will be done in May.
Well, if they don't file for it.
This motion will be done in May.
Yeah, when school normally, so.
Yeah, we're seeing if they can make more money that way. You know, you don't wanna lock them in.
I, I don't know for sure how unemployment works, but I don't think it's intended to have you make more money.
No, not normally.
This job.
No, I don't.
About seventy-eight percent.
And I sure don't know of any, uh, pair that files for unemployment in summertime. I didn't.
But they're pretty committed to us.
I would, I think we didn't know if Dr. Rollin, I have nothing against anybody doing that.
If they're that committed to us, I think we can commit to them.
I don't think, I don't think you should put around this. I agree. I think you should make a commitment towards them. Anyway, make the motion and if something changes, anyway, we have another board meeting anyway, April thirteenth, we can amend it. Is that, is that right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to compensate our hourly classified staff at a rate of at or near their weekly average in return for resolution to be signed by each employee to return to work when school resumes this semester or next school year.
Second. I'll second.
We have one employee that's guaranteed overtime hours.
Well, it'd be a part of his average, so.
It would be. So, forty at a regular rate, ten at a time and a half.
Anything else you wanna throw in?
But that one's a little funky.
Yeah, it is, but we're doing the same for everybody that's ready.
Like we said earlier, they have a budget based on what they're.
They can count on all that, so.
It's accounted for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been first and second, did you get that?
Who got the second?
Mike.
Krista?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Yeah.
What do you do to state?
I, you. You, you sure?
It's already passed.
I have a statement.
Sorry.
Yes. Discuss and take possible action on superintendent's authority resolution.
So you see that good language on the back, it's essentially all aligned with our discussion.
So this is just gonna be the essential, you're not gonna go out and surprise the survive, two thousand dollars something?
I will not go buy an eight thousand dollar ice cream machine.
Okay.
But we're still gonna pack on.
But we're still.
Right?
Elementary administrative automobile.
Yes, yes, right?
No. We're trying to throw things in there.
I think you didn't give us anything right.
It's a bomb. It's number thirteen, sorry. Missed number.
Yeah, number.
Number thirteen on the bomb, your highlight number thirteen.
We'll approve that. Any kind of, any car you can buy by selling your stamp machine.
I think there are lots of little matchbox cars.
Okay, does anybody have a discussion on this or?
Get the promotion.
You went on out.
You're gonna pay the essential bills.
I don't know what, yeah, we know.
Well, quit picking on me, Dr. Thor. I heard of it.
And a bid comes up, he's gonna contact us.
Right, exactly.
I, I don't think it's gonna come to play that.
This is only if we can't have a board meeting.
That's if we can't have a board meeting. If we don't, if we, for whatever reason, can't meet on the thirteenth, but we've got bills to pay.
You can pay the bills.
We'll pay the bills.
And make a motion to approve the resolution that authorizes Dr. Rollin's necessary decisions in the absence of the thirteenth school board approval to pay non-discretionary claims.
Second?
Second.
Car on second?
Yes. Okay, so first, sir, and truth. Yeah, Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Okay, I just have one more thing. Are we gonna continue on thinking about doing something over the summer for Kelly and grounds? Or we wanna drop everything for now? Do we need to continue to meet as a committee with that stuff? I mean, the body's there.
I don't, I mean, I'm sure them guys are gonna order.
We're still gonna.
Yeah.
We're still gonna.
We still got a presidency.
Helping the economy.
I'm expecting a bid for the wall from a local contractor. So one more bid, so we have two. Expecting one or two. I think that's a good idea, Mr. South. I mean, there, you know, we, we've, we've had four interviews this week, we got a couple more. We are going on with preparation for next school year, so amidst all this, we had, you know, folks coming up and, um, yeah. So we're, yes, we're still planning to do what we think is important for next school year.
So we'll still have a, like, grounds meeting before our next.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we'll carry on. There's no other business, we are insured. Thank you very much for coming here.
Thank you, everybody.